Thank you very much for your time and for waiting. I have a comment that I'd like to read into the minutes. It's fairly lengthy, so please bear with me. At the April 27th Board Meeting, the celebration of the achievements of our students was delayed by 15 minutes of advocacy in a context of outdated information. Perhaps in an attempt to uphold the confidentiality of negotiations, we, as a board, have waited too long to provide our response to public comment. For many months, we heard from the Association our salary proposals were too low and RSU-22 is falling behind other competing school districts. We also heard the merit pay system was demeaning and demoralizing. Last fall, we proposed a salary increase of more than 9% over the three-year term of the contract. We stand by that proposal. We have stated here and remain committed to working toward a competitive wage for our teachers. Addition to last fall, we agreed to remove the merit pay system from the contract. Merit is not and has not been a component of bargaining for a number of months. With respect to the structure of the salary proposal, we paid particular attention to several areas of concern: lifetime earnings and lockout steps. We offered a reconstructed salary scale which reduces the number of steps and removes those lockout steps. We also proposed a teacher must be proficient in the classroom to receive a step. We strongly believe a salary increase should not be based on longevity alone. We believe every class, every subject, every year of a student's educational life matters, and they deserve proficient teachers. However, to the extent the link between proficiency in the classroom and step increases is the barrier to an agreement, we are not willing to sacrifice our students' education to reveal over this issue. We will authorize the Board's bargaining team to accept the Association's proposal that teachers who are rated ineffective will be placed on an intensive plan of action and will not receive a step. We are willing to remove proficiency as an issue. Over the past three years, the Supervision and Evaluation Model Review Committee, or SMRC, as I know many of you have referred to it, which is made up of teachers, administrators, and board members, has worked collaboratively to create an evaluation tool promoting and supporting proficiency in the classroom. We are confident if we encourage and support this independent committee, we can ultimately achieve our goal of ensuring the very best education for our students. While we are willing to seek compromise in the bargaining proposal, we will defend ourselves against the Association's allegations the Board violated the bargaining law. Recently, the Association filed a complaint the Board has not paid them merit for the 2015-16 year. The 2015-16 year is the first year of the contract currently in negotiations. At the request of the Association, merit will not be included in the new contract. We remain puzzled at the recent demand for merit pay when removing merit pay was central to negotiations. Throughout these months, we have negotiated in good faith with an earnest desire to reach an agreement. We have not questioned the motives of the Association or discredited it to achieve a bargaining advantage. We will not be intimidated by legal process through the filing of the Association's complaint. We do remain frustrated by the tactics being used when we have bargained in good faith to remove merit pay. To summarize our position, we have proposed at least a 9.2% salary increase over the three-year term of the collective bargaining agreement. We have proposed to maintain 100% of the employees' health insurance and 70% of the additional dependent costs. We are willing to drop the proficiency requirement and continue to focus on effectiveness and proficiency through the SMRC committee. In addition, we have a collective bargaining agreement which gives teachers 15 sick leave days, three personal leave days, five family medical leave days, and a sick leave bank that gives teachers who run out of sick leave up to a full year of pay. We also reimburse teachers for up to 12 college course credits. The cost of these benefits are enormous and demonstrate our commitment to our employees. Many of these benefits are, in fact, over and above those of our neighboring districts. Finally, negotiations is a compromise. We listened to and responded to the Association's requests and have offered a proposal which moves us toward more competitive compensation, improved salary structure, and has removed merit pay. We ask that the Association comes to the table with a willingness to settle this contract. Our focus with the elements of this proposal is to settle this contract, get our teachers the pay they deserve, and to refocus our efforts of the schools and community and the Board on educating our children. We ask that the Association's bargaining team meet with the Board's bargaining team this Thursday afternoon to resume negotiations in good faith, settle this matter, and together move our district forward. Thank you. I do have another statement that I'd like to make right now. And I don't see Mark here, but it came to... Hi, Mark. It came to the Board's attention today that there was misinformation discussed about Mark O'Clair related to his resignation that was inaccurate. And, Mark, on behalf of the Board, I want to extend an apology to you. That shouldn't have happened. Now comes the time in the meeting where we will have people who wish to address the Board come to the podium, state your name, and say so. However, I would like to say that we're going to do this in sort of two sections this evening. As you know, we have a section later in the agenda about the budget process. For those of you who wish to make comments about the budget or questions about the budget, we're going to reserve time within that section for you to do so. At this time, if there's anybody else who wishes to make a statement on anything else, we'd ask that you step forward. And I should also caution... Audrey, hi, sorry. Don't mean to interrupt you. Because of the amount of items we have on the agenda and we have a fairly intensive executive session, a series of executive session meetings tonight, we are going to have to cap the number of comments that we have in this section. But that being said, please do come forward. We'd like to hear from you. And Audrey, I'm sorry for interrupting.
First, thanks for the apology. I think that's really necessary. And second of all, after last Thursday's meeting, over 250 of you reached out to Mark and myself, and I really appreciate that. That meant a lot, and I think it's going to hopefully carry us on here in a reasonable way. So, to recap, because not everyone necessarily knows what went on last Thursday, but anyway, good evening. I'm Audrey O'Clair, Mark O'Clair's wife, and Sophie and Sullivan O'Clair's mom. I happen to teach in a neighboring district where I make roughly $12,000 more than my RSU-22 counterpart. I have a superior health insurance plan and am not a part of a system that participates in merit-based pay or has participated in merit-based pay. I haven't spoken at a Board meeting until now because I was a probationary teacher and wanted to protect my professional standing. Now that I have given my official resignation letter, I feel comfortable in speaking out. I have developed an unnatural aversion to the phrase "you don't know the whole story." I can speak for many of my colleagues and friends behind me. I've heard that repeatedly over the last several months. These words have been spoken by community members, folks from out of town, and just recently by a certain Board member. At Saturday's rally, it was brought to my husband's attention that Board members were perpetuating a rumor about my mother-in-law passing away and leaving us a substantial amount of land as our inheritance and leaving us with no other option but to relocate. Please note, my mother-in-law, Janet O'Clair, a resident of Herman and a teacher at Herman Elementary School, is very much alive and well, and I'm fairly certain that at the time of her death, will not have 300 acres to pass on to any of her three children. In actuality, we will be purchasing my mother's home in Fayette, Maine, and the whopping four acres that come along with it. Make no mistake that our family's decision to leave our jobs in this community are entirely based on this debacle and this situation and what this has done to our community and our professional selves. I was happy at my job, and I have a huge network of the most amazing friends and colleagues. Sophie has the most remarkable group of friends and has developed into the classiest human being I'll ever know. She has been educated by some of the finest educators that will certainly be disappointed to not watch her finish what they started. While Sullivan has just begun his educational journey, it was off to the loveliest start, and we were eager to watch him develop into a young man of character as a Hampden Bronco. I'm sad for my kids, I'm sad for me, and I'm sad for Mark. But we are a team, and we will be just fine. Please understand that this move and major upheaval of my family would not have happened just before my 13-year-old's entrance into the eighth grade were it not for the decline of morale and teaching environment at Hampden. We are smart enough to know that this is a dangerous time to move at this stage in her development, especially given the remarkable friendships and academic profile that she has created. Unfortunately, my husband isn't leaving to teach in a district where he will make $1,000 more a month; rather, he will take a $3,000-a-year payback. It will be worth it. While the district I currently teach in is experiencing significant budget cuts and even facing many layoffs, my position in the district was secure. I had no intention of leaving. There it is, our story, our truth. Now that I've cleared that up, I beg you not to give me the whole story, but rather to enlighten us all with the whole truth. I don't want to hear any more stories, and neither does anyone else. It's time that... And I appreciate the language and the report from the beginning of tonight's meeting. I think there needs to be more of that, and we're feeling really starved for that, and the stories need to stop. So, thanks.
Audrey, Mark, I want to reiterate the apology and say that you and your family will be missed, and good luck.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Young. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board this evening. As with all my lesson plans, I have a goal for speaking tonight. My goal is that I'd like to give you some facts to help you learn more about my experiences as an educator, which will help you make more informed decisions about keeping highly qualified teachers right here in RSU-22 so that we won't have any more situations happen and losing valuable educators. I've been a teacher for 19 years. I've had the pleasure of serving the RSU-22 for 17 of those years. My first five years in RSU-22, I taught fourth grade. In the spring of my fifth year, my position got riffed. I scrambled to put together my resume and apply for other positions because I was happy at the district. I didn't want to move. Later that same year, a second-grade teacher announced her retirement, so I applied for that position and received the appointment for her position. The following year, that fourth-grade position that was riffed was reinstated. Since then, I've been teaching second grade at Smith's in Winterport. Throughout my comments tonight, I'm purposely refraining from commenting on my own opinions and emotions and how the events of RSU-22 has affected myself and my family. I'm doing this because I want you to focus on the facts of my experiences, and you can draw your own conclusions. Over the course of my 19-year career, I have worked with six different principals. Granted, some of those principals only stayed at the schools I worked at for one year, but typically, I have worked with a new principal every three to five years. During my tenure at RSU-22, I sought to improve my educational practices in many ways, most significantly earning my master's degree in reading and literacy in 2008, followed by my National Board certification in 2010, and finally by earning a second master's degree in mathematics in 2011. I truly appreciate the district's financial support in helping me reach these goals. As you mentioned, this is a significant cause, but it's also benefiting our district in huge ways. As negotiations proceed, I strongly urge you to continue to support teachers in seeking higher education. I consistently and continually try to improve my own teaching practices. Additionally, I rigorously support my colleagues' practices by attending ELA math committee meetings, curriculum meetings, PLC meetings weekly, bi-monthly staff meetings, serving on hiring committees, serving on the leadership team, and being trained as a mentor and volunteering to do summer curriculum work. Furthermore, I do presentations at the school, at district level, and also at educational conferences. I lead grade-level in-service meetings. Also, I offer my skills, resources, and expertise to teachers, anyone in the district who needs to help. Finally, I work with student teachers from both Hassan and UMO as well as Hampden Academy In addition to my leadership roles and professional development endeavors, I affect positive environmental change by leading the Smith School recycling team. I'm working with a company called TerraCycle that collects waste items that would typically be thrown away, like toothbrushes, toothpaste tubes. TerraCycle companies and the companies that endorse the collection brigades like Colgate give cash incentives for nonprofit organizations that participate in their program. I've started and run a recycling team at Smith School for seven years now. Since its inception, many students have volunteered their time to collect, sort, and ship the upcycled items. We've earned approximately $6,000 in seven years recycling these items that receive one to two cents per item. So you can imagine the number of items that I oversee sorting every single week in order to obtain that amount of money. I volunteer my time every Friday afternoon to lead the recycling team. We have spent the money on school-wide improvements like books for the library, solar panels to power the lights in the front of the building, and most recently, two water fountains and a water bottle filler to replace a single faulty fountain. There are some numbers that I would like you to consider. At Smith School, our student population has grown such that we have three teachers at each grade level for quite some time now. Approximately 10 years ago, the second grade went from two teachers to three teachers. In those 10 years, since that increase of one teacher, five different teachers have held that position. So a new teacher is hired approximately every two years. Each time a new person gets hired for that position, it falls upon the veteran teachers to train this new member, help them prepare lessons, mentor them, aid them in being successful teaching second grade, helping them learn all the school and district policies, making sure that they are adequately teaching, assessing, recording assessment results, and reporting out the assessments and all results to Terrence. This is all in addition to our own regular teaching classroom responsibilities. Additionally, each year I'm on this hiring committee for this other second-grade position, the number of applicants has been dwindling. There's two more numbers I'd like you to consider. Behind the scenes, I typically spend four to six hours each day, including the weekends, beyond my contract hours, preparing lessons and doing all the things that I need to do to provide a high-quality education to my students. I'd like to briefly dispatch report cards. On our second-grade team, we team-teach math. I collate the data for all the math standards for all the second graders at Smith School. Additionally, RSU-22 elementary schools are required to complete two report cards: a Power School Report Card and an Empower Standards-Based Report Card. It takes approximately 20 to 40 hours each quarter to prepare accurate Standards-Based Empower School Report Cards. Again, this is in addition to all our regular classroom responsibilities. I'm trying to help paint a picture for you what a highly qualified teacher's day really looks like. The seven hours we spend with our students Monday through Friday is really the tip of the iceberg view of what we actually commit to our teaching craft. As I followed and supported the negotiations process, it's become impossible to ignore the discrepancies between the information being presented and reality. Recently, I received a copy of a letter that was sent to the school board urging you to reconsider raising teachers' salaries. The letter claimed that Winterport residents could not afford an increase. I question this information because there were no hard facts in the letter comparing community incomes. I compared some of the income information from surrounding communities, and for one example, in 2013, the median household income for Winterport residents was $43,761. In Orano, the median income was $34,143. This is almost $10,000 less than Winterport, and in fact, this amount is less than every single other town in our district. Yet, again, just based on myself as an example, at 19 years' experience with two master's degrees and attaining National Board certification, I could have made over $5,000 more in Orano than in RSU just this school year. Furthermore, a teacher that in Orano, same number of years' experience but only a bachelor's degree, made $3,000, over $3,000 more than me. RSU-26's community members make less money than RSU-22's community members, yet they pay their teachers significantly more. Another piece of evidence I would implore you to consider is the out-of-pocket costs sacrificed by teachers every year. Each classroom at Smith School is given an annual school budget of $250. I'm able to order only the bare minimum with this amount of money, things like easel pads, spelling folders, desk name tags, and whiteboard markers. Everything else is provided out of pocket. I estimate that I spend approximately $500 to $1,000 every year to provide for supplies that are not able to be provided by the $250 budget. Recently, at the Hampden Town Council meeting on Monday, May 2nd, Town Manager Jennings shared information regarding a non-personnel part of the RSU-22 budget. He noted discrepancies between the budgeted amount and the actual spent amount of the RSU-22 budget. One example pertains directly to my aforementioned out-of-pocket discussion. Manager Jennings stated that the RSU-22 instructional supplies were budgeted at about $135,000. In fiscal year '15, the actual spending was $101,000. In fiscal year '16, the budget for the instructional supplies was $126,500, and the year-to-date spending is only $83,400. The proposed fiscal year '17 is budgeted for $132,000. Manager Jennings said that this was a discrepancy of $30,600 between the proposed budget and the last year-to-date spending. As you review the seniority lists for the schools, the number of veteran and experienced teachers who can help guide newer staff members is decreasing significantly, not because these staff members don't want to teach any longer, but because they want to be in a place where they are treated with professionalism and respect. One last item that I'd like to reach before closing is administrator evaluations. Many, many hours have been spent discussing teacher evaluations and the process, but I question you: how are administrators being evaluated and held accountable in our district? Will your pay be tied to your performance? Are scales being developed to evaluate administrator effectiveness? I certainly don't expect answers, of course, on the spot tonight, but I've been asking these questions for years and have not heard or seen examples of how you plan to evaluate our administrators. In closing, I'd like to return to my original learning target for my comments this evening. From the information I shared, I hope that you've gained a deeper appreciation for how dedicated I am to the profession of teaching and the community and students of RSU-22. Also, I'm in hopes that you have gained a better understanding of the hours, perseverance, sacrifices, and dedication it takes to be a highly qualified teacher. Withholding salary increases, decreasing benefits, and declining to offer competitive salaries is not the way to keep highly qualified teachers in our district or to attract highly qualified candidates to the ever-increasing openings in our district. The ball's in your court, how you want to influence change in our schools, community, and for our children. As you mentioned, let's work together to utilize the budget money more effectively, treat our teachers with respect, create a fair and effective evaluation process, and bring RSU-22 back to the top of the educational field. Thank you for your time and considerations of the information I've shared.
We do need to move on. We do need to move on at this point, given, as I mentioned earlier, to the next issues. I thank you very much for your comments, the time you took to prepare those comments. We will be talking about superintendent evaluation later this evening in the executive session, and many of the questions you raised regarding the budget will be discussed later on in the evening. Okay. I have said enough. We can move on to the election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Excuse me, are you telling us that you're cutting out public comments?
Yes, as it relates... Yes, as I said, if there's budget-related comments, we're going to do that during the second session, but in light of what we have to do, yes. So election of Chair and Vice Chair.
I nominate Ms. Chair.
Okay, and so let's explain how we have to go through this process.
Yes, we can choose to have the elections by a show of hands, or if there's a desire and a vote affirmatively, we'll have ballots, if that's a desire.
Show of hands. Show of hands, okay. Are we out of motion? Sorry.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
You're a second.
Okay, sorry. All in favor?
When's your...
No, no, wait. Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
I'm really not trying to rerun this. You might actually look really happy. Are there other nominations?
Mr. Chair, would I move that nominations be closed?
Okay, thank you. That being said, all in favor?
I nominate Karen for Vice Chair, second.
Okay, we have a first and second on Karen Hawkes. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close that. All in favor for Karen Hawkes as Vice Chair? Great. I think that does it. Eric, I want to say thank you very much for your service over the years, and we're going to miss you when you set up the Board in June, and thanks for what you do.
I appreciate everything I've learned throughout the years being on the Board, and hopefully this won't be the last you'll see of me.
Karen, thanks for stepping up.
My pleasure.
Okay, we'll move on to personnel.
Under personnel this evening, first, I'd like to report publicly the resignations that I have received, and I also want to express appreciation for the tenure of these people who will be leaving our district. First is a science teacher here at Hampden Academy, Mark O'Clair, as we just heard from Mark's wife. Also, here at Hampden Academy in the Science Department, William Leatham. Bill's been here a number of years. At Reesbrock Middle School, Nancy Simpson. And also Barbara Carter. Barbara is a nurse for us at Reesbrock. At Wagner Middle School, Jennifer Hirth. And also, Weatherby Elementary School, Lee Charles, who is in the area of literacy. And also, one that I received just on Monday, a longstanding professional educator here at Hampden Academy is Richard Valentine, Dick Valentine. So those are current resignations that I have received as of Monday. So again, we wish them well. Under nominations?
So I wanted to insert a comment here. You know, it's been discussed a lot. I think it's safe to say we, as a Board, are obviously concerned about the resignations, retirements. It's been, you know, I'm... I understand. I hope we have a chance to talk more about that at a later time, but I did want to take this opportunity tonight to thank those of you who have announced that, who have made that decision, who are here tonight, to thank you personally for years of service to the district and to our children and the students. We, I believe, June 1st, we...
Invite people.
Invite everybody back to perhaps better honor your years of service here in some small way, but thank you.
I have one nomination this evening, and that is the girls' varsity soccer coach here at Hampden Academy is Paul Wellman. You can see the stipend associated with the collective bargaining contract to $5,250. My nomination for your endorsement this evening, girls' soccer coach, is Paul Wellman.
Moving background information on Mr. What? We used to get like a...
Yeah. Ms. Larson, please.
Do you want to do the move, motion, and then discuss?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we should have done that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lee, you got a question?
Yeah, Lee, if you'll give us background, please.
Yes, Mr. Paul Wellman. Currently, he is an English teacher at a neighboring school district, but also a wide variety of soccer coaching experiences as well as a player himself. He served our country as a member of the U.S. Marine Corps proudly. We welcome him. He has, even for myself, who has no history of being an athletic director, to look at the resume. It's very impressive to have him here, and one of his biggest goals is to unify our girls' soccer team and provide stability for them. As you or some of you may be well aware, we've had a number of coaches in the last several years here, and so we're happy to have him onboard, and he's looking forward to the future to help establish a stable soccer team. team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, well, welcome. I have no transfers to report this evening, so under the student test report, reading the essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation this evening is Cindy.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Cindy. Next item, per board policy, I'm reporting the quarterly report on fundraising. You can see that we have a number of people putting forth a great deal of energy to support some very worthwhile initiatives in our school district. For the benefit of the audience, the total fundraising this quarter attained is twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars from all of our schools. I see Peter Vazini in the audience, certainly he and his wife have been involved, and you can see for the board's benefit where the fundraising monies go and all of the efforts. So again, congratulations for those people in putting forth a great deal of effort to support the initiatives in our schools. Noah is studying tonight for an AP exam tomorrow, so Mariah?
I'm afraid I don't have much from last one, so it's been doing AP tests, but not much.
Okay, thank you. Eno, Noah, boy. Thank you, Noah.
I had made on the agenda questions of board members. Again, I would, I would, I think I would say, if you have questions related to the budget, we're gonna have a time to talk about that in just a minute, but anything else, please.
Yeah, and this actually is not, this isn't a question. I'm gonna take just a brief bit of privilege. When I was seventeen years old, and I was at the old Hamden Academy, I had one of those moments where a teacher brings you up short and changes your life, and that teacher is retiring tonight, and it was Bill Leatham. I was in his chemistry class, and I had, the younger people here don't know what this means, but I had to go from first wing to fourth wing, and then back to second wing for my English class. And we had been doing a chemistry experiment using the hood, and Mr. Leatham was cleaning up in the back, and there were like three minutes left in class, and I bolted because I needed to go get my book and get back to English class. Mr. Leatham showed up at my English class, and to say the least, he had the look on his face, showed his displeasure with what I had done, but what he said to me was, you need to wake up and realize that there are people in that class that watched you, and the fact that you did this, that made it okay for them to do it too. And what he did in that moment was, he explained to me that I have this voice, and whether I like having the voice, whether I want to use the voice, and whether I intend to use the voice, whenever I act, I do use the voice. And I remember that more years than I'm going to relate to you now later, many, many times during the week, I come back to that, and that's one of the reasons that I'm sitting here at this board right now, is because I want, through my actions, to have a positive effect on the people around me. And so it is a real pleasure for me, a bittersweet pleasure, to be able to be sitting here while Mr. Leatham has submitted his resignation letter. All of us on the board appreciate every single teacher that is here today, that is teaching here today, that is resigning today, and that will be teaching here in the future, but I have a little special privilege because I'm sitting up here, and I decided to take it and say thank you, Mr. Leatham, for your years of service and for waking me up when I was seventeen.
I don't know if this is Athletic Committee, Policy Committee, but can we evaluate the school athletic requirement of mouthguard policy? I've been putting teeth back in kids' mouths way too frequently. Kids aren't wearing mouthguards, they're not wearing face masks. I didn't know where to begin with that. I mean, to look at a fourteen-year-old girl that's missing two front teeth and two more on the side that'll probably die because they were required to wear a mouthguard and weren't required to wear a face mask, um it's just getting old, and I didn't know, as a school, if we can look into that. I know the Principal's Association has their bit, but we, we as RSU 22 have always been leaders in policy, and I think it's time that kids need to keep their teeth in their mouths and keep me from having to put them back together.
That's a great point, Tony. I'll contact the principals and the A Ds to follow up on that. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, committee reports. Uh, gosh, I'm not thinking straight. We might be go, except education was not, did not happen today.
No.
Budget committee we're gonna be talking about, and policy committee. Do we have any committee reports on them? So, we're all set, we're good? Okay, as noted, we did add to the policy consideration an item for first reading this evening. Again, we will be discussing and acting on first reading of policy, GCOA, supervision and evaluation of professional staff and the accompanying regulation, GCOA dash R. Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I, I would like to apologize because we had a meeting last night, the policy committee did, with administrative representatives, as well as the SMRC chairs, Sue and Emily, and we have, we have, once again, well, I should start over, I'm sorry, another cup, but I had to. So we revised the regulation, that's really where we spent the bulk of our time, and I would have to say again, thank you to everybody who's been participating in that, including the community members who've come to the last two meetings to help provide some input. So the regulation is where the bulk of the revisions have taken place, and the copy that was provided for you, the hard copy, is the marked-up copy. We will be cleaning this up for you ASAP. So I ask that, as we move this forward for first reading approval, that you can accept it as in this format, and we'll clean it up and send it to you electronically, and then I'd like to be able to bring this forward on May eighteenth for the second reading and adoption, as SMRC is going to be presenting their, their presentation at that, at that time. We feel like this is a good collaborative effort that takes into consideration multiple points of view, respects the work that SMRC's been doing over the past four years, and addresses some of their concerns. I will say that the two biggest issues that have been revamped and that are captured within this regulation are that the summative evaluation will become once every three years, and that there will be a formal evaluation annually, but it will look different, the focus will be on domain, domain one. And so that's all outlined in this regulation, and that we're switching the valuation year to mirror the school year rather than the calendar year. So those were two major recommendations that SMRC brought forward that we have integrated into the revision, and very modest revision that you'll see on the policy. We just added at the tail end of the policy that this is mandated by the educator effectiveness law. We wanted to make sure that that was tied in so that if there's any changes to regulations at the state, that it will prompt some reevaluation of the regulation that accompanies this policy. So with that, I'm asking for a motion to move both the policy and regulation forward for approval of first reading.
So move.
Second.
I'm sure there's more technical term to that.
First and second, any comments or questions?
Karen, you probably explain why we're bringing the regulation to the board.
Oh, yeah. Um so typically, the board doesn't approve regulations. The only one that I know of that we have approved consistently in the past is the substance abuse tobacco policy because it has such a, it tends to generate a lot of discussion and is high as, for, for, for reasons that are historical, and I've only been here two years. But anyway, this, this regulation obviously is very sensitive. It impacts the, the teacher evaluation process and captures SMRC's recommendations, and we felt it important that the board understand what the changes are, as they are quite significant as compared to what has been happening leading up to this year. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Again, this is for the first reading. All in favor? Any opposed?
Oh.
Sorry, Jason, were you opposed or were you?
Well, I was. I'm for it.
So it was unanimous?
That was.
Okay. Great, Karen, thanks. You and the policy committee, thank you to the members of the SMRC committee who are here, it's really great work. I, I, we've said this before in the recent weeks, I appreciate the direction which is going and the work you're doing, so.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, under Old Business, item eleven, we're gonna be discussing and acting, well, we're gonna be discussing it anyway.
Discussing, yeah.
I'm gonna turn this over to Cindy and Evil Janess to walk us through the twenty-sixteen-seventeen school district budget draft.
So I think all of you have been to a budget committee meeting and have been through the presentation, but we thought, in light of the public interest in this budget and in the interest of making sure that every board member really does understand what's here, before we move it forward, that we go through it one more time tonight, and so that the opportunity exists to ask questions, should we need to, and should you not be in a place where we're ready to go, we can set a special meeting for the eleventh to come back and work on it for, finalize it. We will have to finalize it next week in order to hit the
Yes.
referendum dates and such, but we certainly have time to spend more if we need to. So first, I want to just thank the incredible amount, thank the administration for the incredible amount of time and effort that they've put into this. The principals and the rest of the administrative team start in October, and this is, it is a regular effort and a constant looking at their budgets and the needs of the students in the district to help formulate this budget. It is, it is a long, long process that you just see is based in the strategic plan of the district, which every year is validated and adjusted as necessary. In addition to all of the work of the administrators, they also spend a great deal of time with board members in many, many committee meetings. The work of the committee meetings thing guides the priorities and efforts and focus of this budget. So by the time we get here, there's been an incredible amount of conversation, incredible amount of work. The finance committee has met Newborough both times. We've had an audit. We know where we are and where we need to go. So I'm gonna skip the first two pages because that's our strategic plan that you're very well familiar with, you understand, so we don't need to go through that, and we've gone through it now in the budget committee meetings. I'm just gonna highlight where we are at the, after the review, and remember that where we are currently with our gross budget increase and local increase is less than the first presentation that we did. With further adjustments, we're now at a gross budget increase of one point eight and a local budget increase of two point eight. So from there, what I'm gonna do is ask Evil to go through the presentation so he can give you what we've added, what's changed, the context for the budget, and then after that, you'll be able to ask questions. I think Rob has some interesting, good stuff to share with us as well from the work he's done in understanding the budget, and so we'll proceed in that direction, okay? So there should be plenty of time to ask questions, and if not, we have things we have to come back to, we can go another week, right? Evil?
Okay, so going over a few demographics in regards to projected district enrollment for the next ten years. As you can see, this is the best fit model enrollment projections completed since past January of two thousand sixteen. You can see that our enrollments are pretty steady. They are going to go up a little bit. As Mr. Superland lines recorded last week, from April to April, our enrollment's grown a hundred four students from April fifteen to April sixteen. So our enrollments, we are one of the fewest districts that we are gaining some enrollment numbers. This is just another demographic page showing the debt service that we have, which includes state and local debt service, and that you can see that includes the high school and a few maintenance and repair projects that have occurred in the past few years. It does indicate that the state's reimbursing our school system three million four hundred fifty-five thousand, and the local cost is nine hundred nineteen thousand. This is a new slide that just was released by the M D E O E. You can see the per pupil cost since two thousand five in our district. This does not include debt service, it does not include transportation because it, the Department of Education does not include those numbers because it skews it. For example, we have debt service because of the high school, and that would skew the per pupil cost. So you can see in, we have been either at the state average or a little bit below the state average. However, in fourteen fifteen, you can see that we have about a thousand dollars below the state average in our per pupil cost. I think we need to take a look at that. Is that a good statistic? Was that a statistic that we have to, because a thousand dollars is, is quite a substantial amount of money. So our per pupil costs are below the state average. This is just a, another page that shows where our expenditure goes. Our expenditure goes compared to the state. You can see, for example, in regular instruction, thirty-five point two percent goes to RSU twenty-two. The state expends about forty point eight percent. You can see special ed, C T E is called career techno, uh, technical education, which is our vogue school. Other instruction is identified as our athletics and co-curricular activities. Student staff support includes our nursing staff, our curriculum department, our guidance department, our library, and our technology department. Am I missing anything on that? Okay. Then you can see system administration is the central office, which would be the business office and the superintendent's office. School administration is in relation to the principal's office of each individual building. Transportation is our busing. Facilities are all our operation and maintenance of our facilities and upkeep of our facilities.
And fields.
And fields. And the debt service is our debt that you saw in the previous slide. All other is in relation to the school nutrition program. The school nutrition program is a self-funded program so that the local district does not have to participate in any expenditures or revenues in regards to that department. It is also, we also broke it down by per pupil amount on the regular instruction and also specialized instruction. You can see that on the per pupil amount, for example, the regular instruction is about forty-four hundred dollars per pupil, and on the state, it's about fifty-one hundred. And you can see how it compares and all the other class centers as you look at that. Next page is, the board asked for administrative cost comparison to other school systems by percentage, and we also have by per pupil, and you can see where the percentages and with system and school administration compares to various school system and the state average. So RSU twenty-two has a seven point three percent expenditure for administration, if you add both of them together, and the state average is eight point two five. The next page is administrative cost comparison, and I like to note that all these numbers are coming from the Department of Education website. They're all extracted from that. So not only are you, we're comparing it by percentage of expenditures, but we're also comparing it by per pupil cost. And you can see where the per pupil cost for system and school administration is nine hundred fourteen dollars per student, and the state average is about a thousand thirty-five dollars per student. Okay, the next page. What this is, is a summary of the proposed expenditures and anticipated revenue for the budget. It's broken down by article, which wasn't down, wasn't presented that way in the past presentations. You can see by article what was approved in sixteen, and you can see what's being proposed in seventeen by class centers. For example, you can see on regular instruction, we had ten million five fifty-one sixty-six dollars, and our proposal is ten million five hundred forty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars. You can see a significant jump in the special ed, and that, and that's as reported in the past. We have a significant increase in special ed students. Our enrollment has grown in two years over forty students in special education. Our enrollment has grown in two years over forty students in Special Education. And that, I will note that some of the students have significant behavioral handicaps which require any one-to-one educational technicians. This budget is asking for nine educational technicians more for $319,000. Half a teacher for $35,000, additional OT services, psych services, and social worker. So about $416,000 is attributed out of the 534 to additional personnel for our special needs youngsters. You can see CTE instruction, which is our Volk School, we took a significant jump in the assessment. And that is determined by the Volk School in Bangor. It's determined by the valuation of our communities and is determined by enrollment numbers. Our enrollment numbers have grown significantly at the Volk School due to the fact that many participate in the bridge year program. So you can see a significant increase in that. And we just had a change in the, in the bylaws at Volk School because of the significant spikes that could occur with enrollment. They are now gonna do enrollment on a three-year average and do the valuation on a three-year average. So schools like ourselves this year will not see a significant spike that we have here.
You mean for, for, for next year and the year after?
That's correct. The other instruction has increased by $25,328. That's because this budget includes the, I call them the defunded sports at the middle school, Ridgebrook Middle School and the Wagner School. The defunded sports, if I can recall what they are, it's the boys and girls soccer. It's the softball team and the baseball team.
I thought basketball as well.
And basketball C-teams.
Basketball's already.
And Wagner School has, will be having a V-team. So that is the reason for the increase in that lineup. That was added in this year's budget. Which was a recommendation last fall. For the Athletic Committee recommend their first priority, if they could do anything, is to insert the V-sports if we could. And that, we are doing that. So our parents do not have to fundraise like they have in the past. Student staff support has been lowered by about $50,000. System Administration, slight increase of about $7,000. School Administration, a decrease of 27. Transportation.
You wanna explain why that $27,000 is even on the position?
$27,000 and is the switch in health insurance for some of our administrators. And also, we had budgeted the marketing position there and we have eliminated the marketing position.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yes. Okay? As a school transportation, that's a 3% increase. However, when we go down on the revenue side, our transportation department knew we would be struggling because we lost $177,000 state money. And the transportation department, to ease this budget, provided a rebate check as a revenue check of $13,800. So the $29,000 increase has been lowered by a revenue rebate check of 13,8, which is now an increase of about $15,000 of the contract, which was a nice donation to the, to the system. Operation maintenance is basically flat. And the debt service, because interest goes down on a yearly basis, the principal stays the same, but the interest goes down, is $50,000. So you can see that the budget is a $532,454 increase and that's a 1.8% gross increase. So that, go ahead.
Let's ask, can you describe student and staff support went down relatively small percentage, but $50,000. What, what does student and staff support refer to?
That is the library, it is the guidance, it is the technology. And that's where we cut one position and we restructured the IT. And that's basically what that is, is the restructuring of our IT department. Was it three to two, Nate?
It was four to three.
Four to three, sorry, four to three. That's the reason.
What, what does that mean, four to three?
FE, or person, personnel.
Oh, okay.
Or individuals to three.
I thought it was a ratio.
You thought that was a defense, right Scott?
Yes, exactly.
So that's the reason for that decrease.
Okay.
Now, that's the expenditures side. Now, the next piece, component is the revenue side. How do you pay for the $30,81,235? And that is on the revenue side. The biggest piece in, we'll explain this. The biggest piece is the state allocation. This past year, which is 1516, we received $18,446,709 and that's in the blue box. We received that state money in July. When the budget was passed, the $18,191,530 was passed in June. The state provided another additional $255,000 to support RSU 22 budget. However, because after the vote in June, we could not utilize any of that $255,000. That'd be carried on, carried forward in the fund balance and you can see that we did carry it over to the fund balance and that we could not expend it at all. So you take, and I don't want, I'll go over it very slow. We actually received this year $18,446,709 for state money. The proposed budget is $18,269,597. If you take those two figures and subtract them, we actually lost $177,000 of state money. Okay? $177,000 of state money we lost.
Eamonn, just to, I think we discussed it prior budgeting, that's less than anticipated prior to the legislature.
Correct.
Right.
Putting additional funding in, it would have been closer to 300,000.
Three twenty-five.
Yes, that's correct.
And that 177, that's after we received the 255 that we couldn't use, right?
That's correct. That's correct. So you are right.
So we received more, but comparatively after.
We're losing, yes, we're losing more. We're losing less. We're losing less.
We gave us money we couldn't use. So it looks like we have more based on what we spent, but it isn't.
Right, so the 255 we couldn't use. This year, we received $177,000 less than the $18,464 that we showed after the 255. But in reality, we got $78,000 more than what we originally got left.
That we were authorized to spend.
Authorized to spend.
Right.
So if you take the 255, 179, subtract 177, 112, it comes out with $78,670. Is anyone clear on that? That's, that can be confusing. It can be confusing. So out of the gate, we lost $177,000. Then we reimburse for state agency client students, which are, students that are in foster care. We're not receiving as much reimbursement for them. So you can see that we eliminated or we have less revenue for about $20,000. Then the others are like rental fees, gate receipts, participation fee, which is another thing that our Athletic Committee wishes to eliminate. And that E-rate reimbursements that we receive for some of our electronic phones and computers and things of that nature. And then all the other fees that you're seeing. Now, one line that you should know is the tuition line. The tuition line are students that attend in the academy from either Orington, Holbrook. Things of that nature. So in this budget, we have thirty-three students that we are anticipating. And this is a, this is a number that we hope we attain times $8,000. We're reimbursed about $8,000 for our tuition students. So that's where thirty-three students times 8,000, we would receive $264,000 of revenue. Now, that number, we did not attain that number of thirty-three this year. So we had lower revenue this year in 1516. We had twenty-six students. Is that correctly? Twenty-six students. So there's $50,000 less revenue that we did not receive this year for our tuition students, but we do think we'll hit the benchmark for thirty-three.